Everyone, and it's seven o'clock, and let's ask everyone to rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, as I call the order, I'm going to ask for to take a moment, as a board of selectmen and as members of the community that are here. Officer Messier, I'd like to read a very special piece that Congressman Joe Courtney presented to the Congress on behalf of Sergeant Michael Spark. Honoring his life and service, and I'll just read excerpts because it's quite long. Madam Speaker, I rise today to mourn the premature tragic loss of an American patriot, devoted husband, parent, Master Sergeant Michael Clark of Bolton, Connecticut, age forty-one. Sergeant Clark tragically lost his life on July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, from a lightning strike on an Army Reserve training exercise with his unit at Fort Gordon, Georgia. He was born in Springfield, Massachusetts. Michael was brought up in a family with a deep sense of duty to our nation. Like his father, David Clark, Michael, twenty-two years ago, volunteered to wear the uniform of his country in the United States Army. During that time, he deployed on four missions occasions to Iraq and Afghanistan. As a striking example of the Clark's family devotion to military service, he and his father were simultaneously deployed overseas on two occasions. Master Sergeant Clark was an operating room specialist with the United States Army Reserve, assisting with lifesaving emergency surgeries in dangerous environments. Madam Speaker, sometimes the essential role of our military's reserve force is not that well understood or appreciated. Master Sergeant Clark's life and public service is a powerful reminder of how critical all of our reserve forces are in providing key support for active-duty soldiers, sailors, Marines, and Coast Guard as part of the mission to defend our nation and our way of life. At home, David applied his skills to another center of excellence, the Bone and Joint Institute at Hartford Hospital, facilitating high-quality orthopedic and healing care to the Connecticut community at large. His work in that cutting-edge hospital system enhances the skills he applied to the work he performed in the Army Reserve. Madam Speaker, Master Sergeant Clark's legacy and commitment for those around him remain infinite. He was a doer, and as part of the caring profession, a highly talented healer. We bear the standard of his memory, not just to honor his service to his family and our nation, but also to put him forth as an example of how every one of us should carry out our own lives, trying to help and heal others. To that end, Madam Speaker, I ask that my colleagues join me in this moment and set the name and character of Master Sergeant Clark into the permanent history of congressional record so that we may preserve for austerity his life story. I will leave this up here for people to read the other paragraph. At this time, I'd like everyone to rise for a moment, so I would please remember Master Sergeant Michael. With that said, I will lead right into a request that we have had, that is, I would hold at the end, but I know that one of our board members has to leave at nine thirty due to a family request, and so instead of waiting until further down under eight B, I would like to bring up the fact that the Bolton PTA has asked to have one of the, if you consider, to have one of the benches at the town green receive a plaque that will contain Master Sergeant Michael Clark's name and his date in his service. So if the board would consider that, and we will bring it up at another time, but that's just for your consideration.
Can we act on it now?
Well, just would you like to make a motion?
I would.
You'd have to add it to the agenda.
First, I move that we add that to the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to? This would be.
First of all, I would like the board to approve the request of putting Sergeant Clark's name on there.
Would you like to say?
I would like to say more, but I can't, so.
Would you like to add where?
To be appropriate. At the appropriate location, as we have honored fallen firefighter at the towers.
Any other comments, Mr. Rupert would like to come up?
No, I have no comments.
And then I would ask for vote, all in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. I believe there will be other requests coming forward, I hope, to this board as well as at other places in town, whether it's our Board of Education, and certainly privately to scholarships that we know are out there, so there is a wake tomorrow and a funeral following the next day. So at this time, I would take up I would ask that we move three, A through H, and we'll move it down to the after nine so that we can save that time, and we also take the resignation of Daniel, and we'll move four also down to the end to save a little bit of time. At this time, the properties and facilities report.
The comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize, I am in as clear thinking as I should be at this moment, public comment. So at this time, we have members of our community with us, and I'd like to thank you very much, as well as our resident safety trooper, if you have not met him, resident Jacob Messier, Trooper Messier, who has been with us since the end of May. And he's with Bolton. Five on three off. So it's not a regular schedule, so that's why sometimes you'll see his car, you won't see his car, and he's also on the road covering other towns when he's not with us. At this time, I'd like us anyone if they would like to speak, and I would ask you to speak for only three minutes. It's because we have so many, we have such a long agenda this evening. If you wish to speak and someone has already made your point, please feel free to give your name, your address, and say, "I agree with so-and-so," and that will help us conserve time.
Very briefly, Ron Bowman, two foot drive, and thank you for bringing us on agenda. We're from the residential neighborhood, next to where the gunshots have been fired. We just hear any questions you might have any.
Thank you.
David Bochamp, fourteen, that's right. I don't know if you guys are going to talk about ordinance this night, or?
You are under, the discussion of possible noise ordinance is under new business, and that's number seven, so please.
Tom, I can do quick ones, so I looked up the window or what's over there, we were talking.
Right.
State regulations, went through all that stuff. One thing I did notice in there, you were talking about noise levels fifty-five.
That's right.
So it does say in there, in almost all of the state regulations, that impulse noise is allowable to a hundred, best case, in the daytime and at night. So as far as gunshots would be impulse noise, so that's what I saw. I even looked up a lot of other towns, you know, noise ordinances, they all pretty much saying the same thing. It seems like they're all based off of state regulations.
Yeah.
I have it all here too.
Would you like to address what, in full disclosure, I've had a discussion with Mr. Bochamp. Would you address some of the ideas that you've come up with for your property?
Sure. Those are some better cases. I bought a decibel meter, I've been going down, testing out a little bit if it's helping or not. So far, as far as this goes, it's maybe something that would be eighty decibels. I've got pounds, like maybe low seventies. Just what I've done in the last couple of weeks. I don't know if noise ordinance would help if the impulse noise is allowable. I don't know. If me, you know, making noise up to seventy something decibels, if it would even help as far as I could, you guys told police, and they came and said, or if somebody wants to measure. Either way, I, ordinance or no ordinance, I'm trying to make things quieter, I'm doing my best to do that. I'm shooting less frequently, you know, and part of the, you know, part of it, I'm setting things up. I'm just maybe doing a little more shooting than I normally would, or even more than I can afford. But I'm trying to, trying to work on it, and I don't, Ron, and all you guys, like me, you need to never shoot there. I don't know if that's, like, maybe that was your goal, but I was wondering maybe if we could come up reasonable, maybe some kind of reasonable whole timeframe, or maybe even once a week for an hour, or something, kind of where we can meet a little. You know, it would be okay with that. I would like to be able to do it sometimes, I don't think I should be able to do it every day or all the time, I can understand why that bothers me. So I guess, you know, as far as all you guys, you've got to put letters and everybody's nail box to say, "My information, my phone number." So I, you know, I don't want to take up all your, too much of your time here, if we could work it out outside of this, that'd be great. And I, like I said, I don't go putting in ordinance, and would it actually help you as far as, because I'm not going over the hundred decibels, not even close. Then it would affect the whole town, it would affect a lot of everybody else in the town, so. You know, it might be something that we go work out, maybe talk after, but that, those are my thoughts. My idea is I'd like to be able to do it, like, for everybody to be okay with it, maybe on certain day or certain time, if we can figure that out, so.
Is there any other comments in regard to Mr. Bochamp?
Yes, Linda Levine, Tanco Drive, so my comment is, it's not only about him. We have all stated here, even Mrs. Bochamp has stated himself, that it's not just him firing, he hearing other people firing. So a noise ordinance would be in order, because it's not just him. There's noises from other people around. He has even said that it's not always him firing, it's other people. If I may to.
Ron, second time?
Yeah, we hear shots every once in a while coming from the other direction, from Hard Rock or much from that, several times a year, gunshots coming from there. Impulse noise is a funny thing. You can have a dump truck on an empty and slow, and that reengage goes bam, that's one, that's an impulse. When it comes to gunfire, it's fine line between bam and bam 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 bam. Okay, that's no longer impulse noise, and the frequency to it. So the rules change, and it's eighty dB is allowed as an act, as a allowable impact.
That's a thing, it's a hundred.
Okay, but it's also said is that anything over five dB, over the ambient noise level, is not allowed.
Right.
So if my backyard is at forty-five, a fifty is not allowed as impulse.
Forty-five.
Fifty-five. Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
And to verify what you said too, is that this isn't just about, right, Mr. Bochamp? It's about everything that goes on in town. We're not the only ones affected, there are other areas of town that are affected, it's a problem. They have gunshots in the area, they don't like it, and they want to, about it. So this, and I did call the window. I thought that their code enforced, so we could talk about that, and it's a relevant date, so I don't want to. But there's lots of things we can talk.
Mr. Messier?
A lot of valid points. Really what it comes down to, it's a Bolton residence, residents exercising their rights, which they have the right to do so, and he's coming up with an appropriate plan for his surrounding neighbors to keep peace. I think that's appropriate. In regards to Wyndham, their code for their noise ordinance is not, is to include will-a-mand.
Yes.
Okay, so we understand that population is greater, I believe there's twenty-five thousand people in the town of Wyndham. All right. Within that, compared to Bolton, where we have just shy of forty-nine hundred people, persons per square mile in the town of Bolton, this is all from the USS, US Census page, is roughly estimated to be three hundred and forty point two people per square mile. Estimated, this is just the average combined square miles with people in the residence, okay, because we have a fourteen point seven square mile town. Compared to Wyndham, where they have just drive of twenty-four and a half hundred, and their square mileage is twenty-seven point nine with nine hundred and ninety people per square mile. So their noise ordinance based on their population, and their square mileage of their town compared to this town, is on two different levels. I don't think we can really compare apples to apples with that, with the town, when it comes to the town of Bolton. But I think as a neighbor doing his neighborly duties, respecting his neighbors, I think he's doing a fair job in trying to make everything as fair and equal for everyone around, but the town to discuss any further actions. Say please, keep on getting called, and there's really not a whole lot, as much as people really think that we can do about it. But I can't be infringing on people's rights, or I can ask. If I go there and I see it happening, hey, your neighbors complaining, can we keep it down? And noise level, because there's no noise ordinance in the town of Bolton, or multiple surrounding towns for that matter, it'll be upon the troopers or responding officers discretion if it's unnecessary noise at that time of day.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir, thank you for your research. I would like to say then, I will personally pledge that I will go up to the Quarry Road area, and I will make some calls, and I will find out if we can find from that side what we know, what we can hear, and we'll have a discussion there also. At this time, I would like to break protocol and ask if the neighbors would mind stepping outside, having a discussion amongst yourselves, because I think it's important, you're here, and you can talk with Mr. Bochamp and talk as neighbors to something that would be agreeable amongst the neighborhood. I think that would be a very positive step, so we'll take those two pieces together, and then if you'll talk to your other neighbors too, I would like to thank Mr. Bochamp for taking my call earlier this weekend, over the weekend, and is there anybody else that would like to talk along this particular, Mr. Sterns?
Mr. Sterns, twenty-one, two foot drive. I appreciate that this is on your agenda, I appreciate a lot more. I wasn't hearing things about square miles. I'm twenty feet from the center, and the noise is probably gone on another occasion. After our last meeting, noise had weighed down. But I think there's a need to do something that dictates what level of noise is acceptable there, because Mr. Bochamp, they still have, so we ultimately may not be as agreeable as he seems. It's just been fine after the last meeting. And it seems to be getting better, now it's gone for a week, so I don't know what happened, it's gone. But I think sound needs to have some kind of noise, that even if it's a little bit windy. As I told you before last meeting, one time it was ten o'clock, and then you started.
Thank you. Mr. Mancino?
John, I just want to make another comment from another point of view that was brought up to me. I hadn't even thought about this, because it's a valid point that should be considered. We have children, grandchildren, children in the area, young children, who are really scared of this gunfire. Now, after what? They're going to get used to it. That's not acceptable. People getting used to gunfire is not acceptable. It would be out West, but it was not, and we're trying to teach them, they hear something like this, they should be afraid. Okay, they should know how to handle it, they should know what they can do, what they can't do, and things like that, and I think an audience is important for that purpose also.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
One more thing, if you don't mind, Ron Bowman.
Make it quick.
There's so much information out there, and one is, every town does not need to have an ordinance, they all fall back to the state. Every town is under their jurisdiction. The town may have its own ordinance, which can be more strict, but not less strict, but more strict than what the state is. So that's the ruling from the DEP. I thought the lawyer is at DEP, and I'm waiting still for feedback on the five hundred foot rule. They'll just try to fire on the five hundred feet. People seem to want to interpret that, it's only, it only refers to hunting. Okay, it's all how you interpret the statute itself, so I'm waiting for feedback from the lawyer for that. And that's a good, good point, but I think what John says, the gunshot isn't just a gunshot, it's not just noise, it's an emotional event. And I dare anyone to come into my backyard, have a cup of coffee with your friends, and then have gunfire, and say, "Is this safe out here?" That's the first reaction. In my home, they're not safe, they don't feel safe. If they don't feel safe, they are not safe, in their minds. That's adult reaction. Imagine a child, imagine an animal. Okay, their reaction to gunfire. I'm gonna leave it at that, because there's so much involved.
Thank you. Thank you all, and thank you for your comments this evening. Mr. Sterns?
That road intersecting with
The jumbo?
And I went here last, I told you about the state, and I just want to know if we are pushing, or if we're pushing the state to provide funds to do what they have plans to do, to improve that is, where it becomes a conforming, a safety. Here again, I was, I was on vacation, was coming down three, or to pull in the, to not for a second, of the night, and so he was a guy on my tail, he turned my turn signal on, well, I had it while I was doing it, he was on my tail, ready, so I'm like, oh, I almost stopped, because I was afraid he was gonna hit me, and then finally, I turned, it blew his horn, like I was in the wrong for turning right there. And it's like, the state has only said intersection is non-conforming, so I really think we should, I hope that we're gonna push them to do something.
Thank you. We do not interact during public comment, but we can give you Paul and tell you what, where the status is.
If you have time, I hope to discuss that same issue.
Thank you.
So would I.
I think everyone has the same.
Yeah, very good, we'll have that discussion. Thank you very much, and thank you for attending the scene.
Thank you.
Five A, properties and facility report. Is there any?
I don't think we have anything specific with what I can share, and it's actually on my administrator's report, is that one of the things that we've been working on for a while, and it is now complete, is the removal of the debris pile behind the Bolton Center Cemetery.
I would like to say a personal thank you to the crew that put that together, because I know that was a long time coming, and to say a very special thank you to the church.
And the church, right.
Of the crossing of their property to be able to facilitate that. And there is a property and facility meeting coming up.
Now, I don't remember the date, but yes.
Very good. I'm gonna skip forward then, if it's all right, if I get consensus with the board. We have guests here to talk about six B, considering possibly act on the Heritage Farm Master Site Plan. I have consensus to move forward. Thank you. Jim, would you like to start off with addressing that at the moment?
So, I mean, at the moment, you know, the consultant was unable to get the executive summary together for us to share with you for this meeting. So, you know, we've included a snippet of the information that has been presented to the Board of Selectmen previously, and you did have the PowerPoint presentation, and had the opportunity to engage with the consultant and members of the Farm Commission. So I think at this point, you've got to decide on whether or not you're ready and willing to act on that based on the information that you've had, or whether or not you really want that executive summary before you act on it.
What's that?
My thought, I tried going through this and making comprehensive sense on it, and did it. Quite frankly, you know, I thought I was through it, and there's another aspect, and another aspect. I I'm ready to move, to come up and deal with this program, but I do need to understand it better than I'm able to do it right now. I really would appreciate an executive summary, so we can focus in on very specific issues that are I think key issues. I mean, there's a lot of secondary, there's serious issues in here, and you know, you want to do the right thing, and it's, you know, it's been a long time coming together. Let's do it right, if it means waiting a session to get that executive briefing, so we can discuss based on that, and then move forward. I don't, I think it's a matter of how we go forward, not that if we're gonna go forward, that's just my thought.
I'm gonna jump to our virtual members. Bob Petrok. You agree that we should postpone till we have an executive summary, is that what the thumbs up means?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, I agree. I would like to see, as I said before, some of the cost, plan for cost recovery along with this plan, the years, the financial impact on the town, and everything else that goes with the costs that are going to be incurred by the town for this plan. As yet, I haven't seen anything that really shows us a payback period or anything of that nature, and I'd like to see that included, so that we can, if we're gonna commit to a plan that commits us to money, or to town funding of things, even if it's grants, and because some of those come with matching amounts and everything, I'd like to see over what period of time would the town would recoup its money, and from what sources, and an actual plan that lays out in each step of the master plan, what funds would be recouped at each stage of the plan for, you know, different types of gatherings, based on what level they're at with the, with the whole farm plan. So it's more than just the plan, it's, there's a lot more that I'd like to see financially that goes along with it.
Thank you. Mr. Keller?
I would have been okay approving the plan as they presented it. I don't feel that it's necessary to push it.
Could you speak up a little louder?
I'm saying, I would have been okay approving the plan as they presented it in their presentation originally, but if the rest of the board doesn't feel that way, I'm particularly happy to wait for an executive summary.
Okay, then what we will do, ask then, I apologize to the Farm Commission that we weren't ready to act this evening, but we are missing that piece, and we'd hope to have it, but we understand family issues that happen. We wish you well, and look forward to seeing the executive summary, and with some numbers hopefully that come with it, that might help us out, I think, as we move this forward quickly the next time. Might help us out, I think, as we move this forward quickly the next time. Much that coming, is there, I, I'm going to break protocol, because the commission is here, three members. Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, just folks on September.
Thank you. And thank you for what you're doing for our beautiful historic piece that graces the center of town. Uh, I had a great pleasure in looking at Mary Harper's, um, letter and looking at it and, um, bringing back the memories of studying the French path.
Discuss this role here.
Oh, thank you. Uh, we're gonna jump down then, if the board will, uh, allow me to, again, we're gonna jump around again to nine B, the Bolton Heritage Farm Event for September twenty fifth. On the administrator's report, would you like to start, Jim?
Well, I mean, Arlene and I had a great conversation the other day, and I think, um, they have a really great start of a plan, and it may evolve a little bit more between now and then, although it's not, there's not a lot of time left. You know, maybe, maybe, Arlene, maybe, Arlene, you could share some of the specifics of what the, how, how the current plan has evolved and where you're at at the moment. You know, my, my thing, when we had the conversation, and we couldn't move forward with, you know, the, the larger event that we had planned this year, I said to Arlene, we gotta do something. And she agreed, and so the, the commission has worked really hard to put together, you know, a, a kind of a family fun afternoon. And so maybe if you could just share some of the specifics, that would be great.
So as Jim was saying, we had a large event planned for last weekend in September. It did come in, did not come to fruition. So we have interpreted signage that we want out and display, and, um, Jim asked that we do something, so we put together a picnic Heritage Farm, just to celebrate the farm itself. The plan is Dennis Sheridan and his band will come up and play. Uh, we're contacting the Kathy DeRouche to get some of the school kids to, to play. We're gonna turn it into a celebration of the farm. And hopefully, have the fire department, we haven't talked to anybody yet, so have the fire department help the truck, have the land trust do a fun event, family event. We'll have people bring a blanket, picnic. We have the reenactment, who, uh, next year, who will come. I assume we hope to have the site plan approved, so that we can have that displayed. We hope to have some books and grant information, so that we can share that with the community. And just have it be a community that, community that will unveil that interpretive signage or injure some music or host some picnics, or get people up to the farm that perhaps don't always get to the farm. There's still a lot of people in town that really don't know they own it from making music. So just ways to get people out and inform them of what we've been working on, and what we're going, and events that could possibly be happening.
Just one question. Wait, is that a Saturday?
It's Sunday.
It's a Sunday.
September twenty fifth.
That's like, it's like a late afternoon, evening thing. It sounded like, I wanna make sure I got it right.
No rain date, if it doesn't happen, it's done.
No hurricanes.
There isn't any out there. Would be very happy.
One is done. Uh, thank you. We were scarred by a hurricane that came when we had a reenactment. We were scarred, scarred.
Scarred, so.
And so, um, thank you very much, if there's something else.
Question.
Yes.
Excuse me. The Fish Family Farm, what is their date for their big deal?
September third.
Okay.
The Lux, Lux, the Lux Museum, uh, fundraiser?
September third.
Is what you're referring to? Okay.
No, fish. Just wanna make sure it wasn't a complex.
No, no. That's, that's the September third, Bob.
Although fish is, they have seven, four, two.
They have their big event.
It's gonna be what?
That supports Lux. Michael, any further, any questions?
Nope, no.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Ideas or, or, or comments?
Sounds like a fun evening. As soon as things gel, if you get any, you know, um, you know, advertisement type stuff you wanna put in the Bolton Bulletin or something, or, um, something we put up on the website, you know, reach out to Kathy and I, and we'll try to help promote the event, you know, through that. And, uh, we, we did, um, onboard a new person in Gary's position, so she can probably help us put some stuff out on social media as well. Sue Ellen Kamara. She started, she started on Monday, please take an opportunity to come in and say hi if you're in the neighborhood.
Does that go to media at Bolton? Will that go to her now?
I don't know if we've got it set up that way yet. We're still working those details out.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Lewis.
Thank you so much. The only, the only, I was gonna say, let's, do you guys wanna discuss the noise ordinance for the messers with us?
Work tonight.
Sure.
That way he can go, potentially go on to bigger and better things.
Uh, then with the board's consent, I will move down to seven F. This poss, discuss possible noise ordinance.
Uh, my comments are, number one, I'm not a fan of having an ordinance for an issue that is very specific in its location. Do that. It's, it's tough. Particularly when you have, um, individuals involved who would very much like to work it out amongst themselves, which quite frankly, is the best way to deal with most of the issues that come forward that are neighbor issues. It really is a neighbor issue. It best resolve that way, and once, once you create an ordinance, like any law or rule, not any, but most, is that hidden factor of unintended consequences that always bite you, you know where. In the noise, the noise ordinance, one of those, eventually turns into a neighbor gotcha or something to harass him as a neighbor.
Thank you.
That's where it's going. I, I am, I, I'm opposed to having one, and if it comes forward, I would vote against it.
Thank you. Uh, someone online, uh, Bob DePietro?
I agree with Bob. If, if, um, I'll see why. If you go down and sit by the road on Route Six, somewhere near a candy place for the Bolton, like where they sell cars. It's Bolton, that Bolton murders. Boom.
Collision.
Bolton collision. The noise there is really a pain. You can't even hear yourself think. So the issue really is firearms, shooting. And it sounds to me that Mr. Bozshap is really working hard trying to accommodate the concerns that the neighbors have. So I personally would agree with Bob Burra, would pick him up, I would vote against having him.
Thank you, Bob. Michael, uh, so go back to the table, Adam?
I've had some experience trying to force both noise, noise regulation and, what effectively was a nuisance situation against a private club that was generating noise. Um, and I understand just how frustrating it is for neighbors who wanna enjoy their property and, and are being prevented from doing that. I also think that in our current environment, the, the frequent discharge of firearms in residential neighborhoods has its own concerns, and when there are people who might have PTSD, or who might have had experiences with firearms in their own lives who are troubled by that. And I am deeply sympathetic. I, I personally don't think that in a residential area firearms should be discharged randomly or frequently outdoors. I mean, it's one thing if you're hunting, you have a specific purpose. People, you know, hunt on large tracts of land, that's reasonable. But to go out into your backyard and, and shoot a lot, when there are gun ranges specifically cited and approved for that purpose commercially, and they're indoor gun raising pages. I'm not particularly sympathetic to that. But that said, I don't think a local ordinance is the way to deal with that for a lot of reasons. Number one, and I just did a little quick research on the intercept, internet. Obtaining the equipment to track and prosecute a noise ordinance costs somewhere between twenty-five hundred and ten thousand dollars to get a reliable device that can be calibrated, certified, and then used in court. For what, a hundred dollar noise violation citation? I mean, that just isn't effective or, or a reasonable deterrent. It's something where either people need to have, it either needs to be an ordinance that can't discharge a firearm outside your home or within a certain distance from somebody else's home, which would be a reasonable, very easy to enforce. You know, it's either shot or not a shot, and it's either within a distance from somebody's home where it's not. That would be fine. But a noise ordinance is not the way to attack that particular problem. And I recognize that there are other noise generators, but most of them are commercial, and so they, you know, the planning and zoning commission can deal with that, or buffering can deal with that, or other things. In the particular situation we have, I, I recognize it. Mr. Bozshamp is trying very hard, clearly, and from his posture, very sincerely to try to satisfy his neighbors and be a decent citizen. And I would hate to see an ordinance interrupt that process. So I think that the neighbors, you know, as a community, as a, as a neighborhood, should be, should be encouraged to work with them. You know, there are lots of noise buffering ways to deal with this problem that may get acceptable. Although, as I say, I, I go back to that beginning thing, which is that there are people in this world for whom the sound of a shot is an event that, that's not acceptable to them. And for good and legitimate reasons, if I had a relative who'd been involved in one of the mass shootings, or if I'd been involved in one of the mass shootings, I would not ever want to hear an outdoor discharge of a weapon that I could avoid here. And I think we should now recognize that in this country, but apparently our Supreme Court is not going to do so. And perhaps our Senate is not going to do so. I don't think it's for Bolton to, to sort of charge ahead and do that, unless there was a groundswell of support for an ordinance prohibiting the discharge of weapons outdoors or your house, which I think we could do if we chose. That would be the only ordinance that I would support, not a noise. Because again, I've been involved in a two-year history of enforcing a noise issue, and it literally took two years before the, the club finally gave up and sold the property to somebody else, or it wasn't. And that was just about basically loud weekend parties with these.
Oh.
To do with.
That's a different.
Different situation.
But noise.
Basically, a residential neighborhood that was built around a social club. The social club started having money-making, generating parties with hundreds of people, you know, sometimes camping overnight. Levels of noise that you could hear inside a house with a closed window for hours at a time on Friday, Saturday nights. That was a situation where noise ordinance would have been helpful, but if you're just gonna parrot the state regulation, it, it doesn't do anything for you, and the cost to the town to enforce it. I mean, just to buy one of those machines and have somebody sit up there for a week.
And every time you use it, you have to calibrate it.
And then calibrate it, and then go into court for a hundred dollar noise.
Right, exactly.
Where you're gonna get, you know, maybe if you do, if you pile them up, you get fifty or, or a hundred of them, it's worth it. But that's, that's serious time for somebody to do.
Michael?
Uh, I, I agree with Adam in, in the aspect that a noise ordinance is almost impossible to enforce. Uh, if we were going the route that Adam mentioned of an ordinance which limited shooting uh, to X number of feet from a residence or, or something like that, I would be in favor of that. My bigger concern is safety. Uh, you know, the, uh, the residents down there, God knows, a bullet hits a rock and takes a turn, and there's no telling where it could wind up. And my big concern is that, the safety of the individuals that live in the neighborhood around the gentleman. Uh, I believe that he could limit his noise if he chooses to do so. Uh, I could be one of the biggest offenders with noise with the siren in the front of my truck. But after dark, uh, if there's no cars, I don't use it, because it's, would interfere with my neighbors. So I, uh, I think he could do a similar thing and, and find a way to, uh, to work it out with his neighbors. But I am truly, truly concerned about the location of the shooting and the close proximity to neighbors, and the potential for somebody just strolling in the woods, uh, down towards the trail. There's just too much chance for a catastrophic accident. And, and I'm, I, I'm opposed to shooting in a residential neighborhood, period. Uh, I would be, uh, like I said, uh, in favor of what Adam said of, uh, a distance ordinance where if you shoot, you shoot, and you know the, the shot's been taken, and it was X number of feet away from your neighbor, and, and you get a fine. Uh, but a noise ordinance, no. Uh, like I said, I, I, I'm strictly somebody that, that worries about the individuals that live around that area and their safety, and people just strolling through the woods. Uh, you know, this is a resident, a, a rural community where people take a walk in the woods occasionally. And at X number of feet, you're not gonna see them, and, uh, especially at night. And those are the types of things that concern me.
Thank you, Michael. To permit you?
You can't enforce the noise ordinance. It's like you guys said, it's, it's near impossible, and in regards to the situation, it has to do with a specific area and specific people. My question is, if they're so concerned about gunshots, why are they not concerned about Jake breaks going by their house coming down Nacho?
Oh, they are.
Okay, well, there's nothing you can do about that.
Adam and I have said for hearing and listening to that.
You chose. So busy inter, you know, interstate, really interstate at the end of three, four, going on to the main highway or the main route, fastest main route to Providence, Route Six. Well, if you didn't like it, then maybe you should have chose your house somewhere. So that's, that's my thought on, on part of that. Other part of it is, we've already gone to forty-eight Nacho. We've already looked. He's within his rights, he's within all legal limits. What Mr. Bowden wants to say about five hundred foot, that strictly states for hunting. It, it says it in the deep, uh, hunting regulations for shotgun and rifle. Shotgun and rifle, ten acre per rifle, ten acres or more, as long as you're five hundred feet away from a dwelling, livestock, or any combustible, um, container that can cause combustion. Otherwise, when it comes to hunting, shooting from your house, there, there is no state law, and if you are gonna put in a regulation, uh, in this town regarding shooting firearms, well, you can't just take it out on the target shooter, that means no hunting for everyone else. You can't target one person specifically. And if that's the case, it sounds like he's out there, he's hunting on his property, you set that in, and he has to shoot him many, many times to figure out it's target.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
And, you know, with the other towns surrounding, like I said, Mr. Bowden brought up Wyndham. As I said earlier, I, it's not comparing apples to apples. Um, if you want to start comparing apples and apples, I think, a, a town larger than this town and population like Coventry, it doesn't have their noise ordinance. And it keeps it at the state level. That's comparing a little more apples to apples. As we know, like I said, Wyndham. As we know, like I said, Wyndham is part Willman, part of Wyndham. And we've all traveled through Willman and being from this area and working around this area. We know the living of inside Willman is a lot different than the living in a rural country town. I could probably go on and on, but in regards to the situation, seems like we're only getting complaints from Nacho Road. We're not getting complaints from Brandy Street. We're not getting complaints from Tinker Pond. And I don't think as a town, you guys or or the town can target one person. It has to be a general situation.
Oh, Nordens would reflect on the whole time you're right. Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service. We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on then, because I know our time is of the essence. Looking at the twenty twenty, the twenty twenty two budget report.
So Joe Joe produced a report for us. And this this shows that we expensed eighty seven point three percent of our budget. We still have a few bills that are struggling from last year. So these are, and obviously, these are unordered figures, but this is what we have at the moment.
Are there any questions for Jim on this particular paper? Everybody's got their finger on the paper, so I'm gonna hold it open for a while.
April question on previous discussion. Pam?
Bob, we're on the budget. Can you hold that question? Thank you. I'll come back to that, Bob. So no action is required on this?
Right.
So for information, if you have any further questions, please feel free to call Jim or Jill, and we'll get you or they will get you the the answer to your question. The AP report. Five C.
Well, you know, it's the first quarter of the year, and the first quarter of the year, there's a lot of things that come due, you know, like insurances and things of that nature. So there's a lot of
Any questions for Jim on anything on the AP? Personally, the water slide sounded like fun on a hot day.
Yep. That was, yeah, that was part of the recreation program.
I had I had one question. Under true green processing vegetation control at why are we outsourcing that when we have a parks department?
Bottom bottom page on the right, what page number, Michael? Thank you.
Because you have to be a licensed applicator.
To do what what type of?
Well, I mean, it depends on what you're talking about. If you're talking about pesticides or herbicides, but in this particular instance, I believe this was we 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 have a mouse infestation in a particular building that we are not able to control.
It just it it just seems like an awful lot, thirty six hundred dollars, thirty six seventy five for is that a yearly service or?
The one that you're talking in particular is vegetation control at at the farm.
Yep. And what what vegetation are we controlling with true green?
I I'm afraid I can't answer that in great detail.
Okay, if you could just and make sure that, you know, make sure that it's something we couldn't do in house. That's all.
I do know we've been short staffed this year, very short staffed this year.
I know. Like I said, if 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 it's something we couldn't do and there's a good explanation for it, that's fine. If if it's something we could do, I'd rather we do it in house. That's all.
It's a good and valid question, but my my quick answer, I go back to what I said at first, if it's a pesticide application or an herbicide application, you have to be a licensed applicator in a public location.
Okay, you know, just if you could just look into it, Jim, I'd be very happy. That's all. No, no problem.
We'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further discussion? Bob, DePietro, Mike, Bob Moore, Adam Keller, any other questions? At this time, I will ask for a motion to accept the AP report presented. Michael moved. Bob DePietro, you guys second it? Very good. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who unanimously? Are we doing on time, Adam?
We're okay at the moment.
Ongoing business, review the cannabis ordinance with changes made. Jim, do you want to address that?
I don't know if there's much more to say. We've talked about it a couple of times. I know that people wanted to look at it a little more and study it a little bit more. Again, this particular, so we had done the first part of of this, and this really goes to the fact that, you know, in the first part of the ordinance that we have vetted, you know, it talks about fines, and if we have fines, then we have to have you know, a venue for hearing any objections to fines that have been levied. And that requires us to establish a procedure for that. And the town attorney suggested that this was one that he had reviewed previously and thought it was a very good one. And so we've taken the one that he suggested and adopted it specifically for Bolton. And as I recall, the last time we had one typo that we have since corrected.
And this is not to just serve the cannabis ordinance. This is to serve anything that we may impose fines on in the future.
That's correct. Well, and there may be there may be an ordinance or two that already have fines potentially that we don't have a hearing procedure for.
Okay.
Further comments, Mr. Ward?
No. It's readable in layman's terms, if you understand it, it makes sense. Inside of it, I'm assuming it it meets all the criteria, you know. Adam, you had a couple of questions last time. I don't know.
Yeah, well, this isn't the ordinance itself.
No, no.
It's just the
This is part two.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I I I object to some of the language of this, but and I
Would you like to work it through some more?
I really don't because I don't don't I don't feel it's perfect for a slight to be drafting an ordinance of this kind individually. I'm just not satisfied.
Absolutely. We'll come back to you. Bob, DePietro? Mike Aramita?
I I don't have any problem with what I'm reading, but I have to yield to Adam on this because I'm not an attorney and I don't profess to be one, and I I will take his expertise as guidance.
At this time, I don't hear would would anyone like to postpone action on this at this time?
Yeah, I'll I'll move. We we hold off to our next meeting.
Thank you. And
To have, so we can have any further comments.
We'll have them put some other eyes on it.
I I will, I would like to say that, you know, we've had a change in the law with regard to cannabis in particular. And I have not had any reports from town staff that there's been any more of an issue this year that's been noticed on town property than any other year. I do know that we had one public hearing and, you know, we had some feedback regarding the cannabis proposed cannabis ordinance and you know, the the feedback we got was, you know, generally that if we were going to try to do something, it should be through an ordinance. And so we've moved forward in that direction. So this is, this is where we're at. And we could still enact the cannabis ordinance and remove you know, the fine piece of it. You know, so I think you've got some options to consider.
Let me crystallize my objections a little bit because first of all, to this draft.
Yeah.
My objection to the draft is number one, it says it may apply. It it either applies or it doesn't apply. That's ridiculous. The second thing is that the structure of it has on the second page, a citation hearing procedure that's keep in mind that somebody has gotten a citation presumably from either the state police or whoever else has been authorized to issue a citation. I don't know who else it would be other than the state police. Maybe it could be the zoning enforcement officer. Maybe it could be the town administrator, but other than that, and I I can't imagine what would be stupider than having our town administrator out handing out citations.
He's got to book a ticket.
It's a very toy piece of his time. But but like whoever we're authorizing or deputing to do that, that isn't a state cop is going to do that. Okay? This ordinance says that then sometime after that, a warning notice, and then we're going to send them a notice of violation. And I think that's just confusing and unnecessary. If they've gotten a citation that tells them they did something wrong and they're you know, either that citation go to the spirit court or it doesn't. And it says pay this fine within a certain amount of time, and presumably they haven't paid it. The next step should be to trigger the notice of violation or a mo letter. And the problem with that is that's going to be delivered to that person.
Anytime within twelve months.
Anytime of the next twelve months, you get a citation fifty dollar, you know, dollar fine. And then nine, ten months later, you're going to get a notice of violation that says show up, you know, protest this, or we're going to make it a judgment. I question the amount of time and effort that we're going to be spending to collect what might be a hundred dollar now a hundred dollar fine or fifty dollar fine. Now, to me, these kinds of things are for are 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 sort of banked for repeated violations. Somebody is going to do this like fifty times and can't get the state police to do anything because it's not a crime, but it's like litter. Like somebody dumps their trash, but that actually is a state crime. So but, you know, somebody dumps their trash on a neighbor or or somebody leaves in the road, right? And so you're going to want to have a procedure to do that. And that's the the way this is structured is you're going to be able to collect those over twelve months and then hit that person with, you know, fifty citations for dumping their leads on or fifty citations for letting their bar cans spill over and go all into the street or letting their buffalo out in the road or or their
Back in history.
Or whatever.
Do you remember that?
I guess my sense, and I I think I go back to what Bobby said earlier, is I'm not in favor of us having a lot of ordinances that we're then going to be enforcing. Because if it was important enough for that, probably this state has so many crimes and violations and civil and civil infractions in in the general statutes that to add one or two, that we're then going to have a whole structure to enforce and spend money and time, I don't see it. It's just not.
It's to your point, if I may. When we began this discussion, the laws were different than they are now. I mean, everything has had dramatically changed. So what we were trying to deal with was a law that longer, no longer is relevant. And I think I I concur. I think we really ought to rethink.
I don't think the
That ordinance.
I don't think the occasional use of cannabis in our in our parks is a significant enough problem that we should create a whole superstructure.
Right.
Somebody who's then going to get paid and then going to be, you know, have a place to do his job and all those things have maybe a place in town hall, a time in town hall. Like, I I just, I think it's over. And I'm I'm a fan of simplifying our lives and simplifying our government. So I'm not going to vote for these. If if the board feels differently and wants to bark, I'm out of try to make it as as unobjectionable as I can, but I just, we have lots of other things to do. Could we not?
Well, and I think, and I think this all centered on on the cannabis work at a time where, as I say, all the difference now is kind of like
There are plenty of few places people can smoke pot that isn't a town park. They're not going to have to go to the town park to smoke pot. And if they do, they're going to use an edible, and you're never going to know.
That's the point. You can you can eat a gummy or have or have anything.
Or a brownie.
Whatever.
Indistinguishable from the people having the picnic at the heritage farm. If there are any brains at all, they're probably going to be violating some other law that the state you're fucking catching for. So
No.
Jim, and if I could just say, we've been joined on the phone, but online by somebody on the phone. If I ask, could you please identify yourself?
This is Randy Heckman.
Hi, Randy.
Hi, how you doing?
Good. Would you do me a favor and mute?
I don't know if I can from my phone.
I can mute you.
All right, we'll take care of that. Thank you, Randy.
Just be, yep, no problem.
Why it doesn't do that automatically?
Mike Aramita, thank you.
Adam, you make a great point. I I can't disagree with what you've said one iota. I I think you've hit the nail right on the head with this one. I think we should just pack it up and leave it.
I wish the legislature would do that more often.
You're right about that.
Would you like, Michael, would you like to make a motion to table this for the time being?
Table it or just not take it anymore?
I I would, I would make a motion that we table this to a to a time when it might be relevant.
And second?
I like, that's a good way to send it down a river. Yeah. Was that Adam that said yes?
Is it? Did you second it?
I'll second it.
And and any further discussion? At this time, it's this, I would call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on.
It will not appear on the agenda again unless you ask, be specific.
Thank you.
Good.
Listen to manuscript to the state legislature.
Every two years, I get a set of blue books. And every year I have to move them.
In nineteen, there were three volumes. We'll just start with that. Are there eighteen or nineteen now, Adam? Do we need Randy for something?
Randy is interested in what we're going to do with non-union pay races.
Thank you. I'll make sure if he was here for a reason, we needed his expertise. I was thinking. At this time, we are on seven A.
Yeah, we jumped around a little. It's okay.
They're down here.
Give me a minute. I'll find my my notes here. A lot of minutes, huh?
I I kind of, I kind of think that I feel the same way about this as I did about the the hearing officer and that we should put this away to a time where it becomes necessary.
Relevant.
Relevant. Relevant.
Did you remember to go back to whatever?
At this point. We will discuss seven A, consider an act on non-union pay.
So in general, we tend to follow the supervisor's contract with regard to these pay raises. In the supervisor's contract, they have received a two point two five percent increase for this year. They are increasing. Uh, the town share, the pension contribution from five percent. The five point five percent. And they've increased their cost share for health insurance. Uh, from fifteen percent to sixteen percent. There are some specific callouts here that. Um, we have discussed to some degree. Uh, in particular, you know, we, we had discussed in the past during the budget process. Uh, making the assistant building officials. Pay to measure it with the experience. And require educational requirements to that position. And this is that, that proposed increase. Would put it at the median level of. What we found in the. CCM salary survey. It, it over there in the right hand column, we also have. You know, some specific pay increases for certain individuals. That were a part of their onboarding and negotiation. And part of it is because, in particular, I think for library. They wanted the. The discussion that we had, again, I think this goes back to the budget. Discussions where it. The, the, the substitutes needed to have a pay that was. Reasonable in comparison to library pages. And so that, that is all part of that. And there is also in here. Uh, we do have. The chief provided us with a spreadsheet of wage increases that. Were discussed and agreed upon during. Um, you know. This goes back, I think. Probably before, probably Mike and and Bobby were on the board, but I think. With, and Bob. But this, this goes, this goes back quite a while.
We, we had agreed on the, the plan back then.
It was a phase in. And so this is what we've put together with the help of the finance department. So that we could try to understand all this and be able to act on these raises. We've had it on your agenda a couple of times and we've tabled it. Uh, to a time at which we had passed a, a, an approved budget.
Ask one question, the town hall clerk, does that? Uh, halfway down the non-union hourly page. Does, is that supposed to be the assistant town clerk?
No, I think that's different. It may, it may be.
I think that is the assistant because in the. Is there for seventy three thousand three hundred thirteen?
Yeah, it's not called that.
So, okay, that I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Any questions for Jim on, on the, on the non-union hourly?
So these are all increases of two and a quarter percent.
With the exception. With the exception of the ones in the right hand most column.
And those are to go along with minimum wage, Jim?
Some of those are to go along with minimum wage. Uh, some of those, we, we had had conversations. Again, during budget regarding the lifeguards in particular. And some of those positions in order to be able to attract candidates. We were increasing some of those pays. And then I, I had just explained a little bit of the. Difference with the library, but a lot of it has to do with minimum wage, which is now, I believe fourteen dollars an hour.
What about seasonal buildings and grounds three? Why is that up?
Because that individual, because we are so short staffed and that individual. Has taken on the lead role in dealing with staffing and scheduling for Indian Notch Park. And we would, we would ask that you consider making these. Uh, wage increases retroactive to July first. Uh, when others receive their pay raises.
I would like to discuss the van drivers. For the. Uh, senior center, they are required to have physicals, they are required to have CBL. And. It has been increasingly harder and harder to fill that position. Uh, I think it is an underpaid position.
Question.
Uh, yes, Michael.
Yeah, uh, van drivers in comparison to school bus drivers. Do we have an idea what school bus drivers are paid?
Mid twenties.
Mid twenties? Okay. You know, I, I, the van driver. Has the same responsibilities as a school bus driver. And even more so in some cases, because they actually have to help their. Their clients on and off the bus. Uh, you know, they, they're dealing with, with people. Who have limited mobility and things like that and, and other medical issues that they have to deal with. So I, I, I think they're underpaid. I, I agree with Pam.
Bus drivers, school bus drivers have to have additional endorsement and they work a split shift.
And this is per hour?
We, we have, we, I believe we, one of the things that we discussed and we started doing was paying for some of the. You know, s- some of the things that they have to do specific to this because they do make such little money. So we've been doing a little of that. We started a little of that last year.
With the physical, I think.
Right, with the physical.
But that just sort of takes the edge off, that doesn't. Is there a recommendation from the board to increase?
Right. What I would, what I would suggest is. I'd like to approve all the other ones and just have. Uh, Jim come back with a proposal on that based on. What's out there. And we can make, we can also make that retroactive.
Can, can we maybe increase that one to the two point two five percent or whatever? Whatever you might approve and we'll do some additional research.
I'll make that as part of my motion.
Come back with additional.
Yeah, to accept it as presented and then come back again to, to view what. What it should be and we can modify it.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Bob DePietro.
Discussion.
Uh, and discussion, Michael.
Yeah, uh, Jim, do you know how many van drivers we actually have now?
Two, two, as far as I know, and I think there's one other one that we get to fill in every once in a while.
Okay. Is Ralph still with us? Ralph isn't, okay.
Once in a while.
Okay. Alrighty.
Thank you very much.
I think we have three. Yeah. We have Karen.
Karen, Bruce and Ralph.
And I think Cheryl still helps out on occasion. Think she did a trip recent, but maybe not. Yeah, maybe.
Thank you.
But two regular ones for sure.
Thank you, and we'll get back to you on how many and, and what the cost would be. Uh, we'll break out on that. Can I have a, then I will call for a vote if there's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Unanimous, thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna abstain on the portion that deals with the fire department. No, it's not gonna make a difference, but it'll make my little heart feel better.
It's going to pass by a vote of four and with one extension.
That's good, thank you.
We'll go to the next page, which is the non-union salary for town administrator down through the. Board of Assessment Appeals.
Well, I assume the town administrator one you'll deal with. When you deal with other things there. But, but the others, we would, you know, propose the two point two five percent. Uh, increase, also the. A five point five percent pension increase. And the increase from fifteen to sixteen percent with regard to the. For the insurance cost share.
A discussion?
Move, I'll move the. Yeah, I'll move that.
With. Town administrator. Thank you. A second?
I'll, I'll yield to Bob.
Thank you, says, he's a second, thank you, and a shrug. Uh, Mike Aramita. Did you have a comment?
No, uh, only the fact that. Do I see an increase in the town administrator at all? At this time? Nothing. Okay, so you're gonna, alright, okay, that's fine. I was, I was questioning whether we would do the same thing as we did with the van drivers and move them at the, the two point two five percent. Uh, move him at the, the town administrator at the two point two five or whatever it was and then. Make the adjustments later when we deal with the. Evaluation and everything, but if it, if this is how it's proposed, I'm fine with it.
I, I don't have any issue with waiting either, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. And whatever we do, I, I will propose at that time that it be retroactive, so. Uh, back to, to January, so. Thank you. Uh, then I would ask, uh, call for the vote unless Adam has a comment.
So just, just to be clear, because I don't think the record's clear with the voting. We're voting to apply the same. Increases as in the union supervisors contract.
Correct.
To the chief financial officer, the tax collector, the town clerk, the recreation director, and the board of assessment appeals.
Yes, the pension and the insurance.
Pension and what?
Any comment, though, any question? Okay, then I'll, all in favor, say aye. Passage unanimously. We will now go to the next page. That's non-union. Not monthly. I was gonna say, thank you very much, that's quite the raise you guys offer. Um, but it's annual. There is.
Do we not?
I guess there's. No increases. Have reduction in the accessory law.
Why is the treasure going to zero?
We don't have a treasure any longer, it's. It, it's no longer a separate position. With our. Financial.
Not normally.
So we wouldn't, we would not act on the fire marshal. And the deputy fire marshal was on page one as the assistant fire marshal. So we already dealt with that one.
Is we not?
At this time, I would entertain a, a discussion on the salaries for the first selectman, the deputy selectman and the. Deputy first selectman and the selectman, as there is no proposed. There's not a change in this particular document. I'd entertain a discussion, Mr. Moore.
As a, at minimum, we have the two point five percent. We play this.
Two point two five or two point five?
Where is it? My apology. We played this game before and. Being, uh, let's be realistic here, it's. It's, it's, it's a small amount, but. Particularly on the first selectman's part, I mean, you're being. Chapped at that rate and so has every previous person's position, but at minimum, it should be a two point five, two point two five.
I agree.
Can I have a can of gas? That might be worth gold.
I have a philosophical objection to approving increases for an elected board during the terms that they're sitting. So my general feeling is that we can vote on a raise, but I would never vote to have a race take place during the term of office. I think that's bad public policy. Sorry. I have a philosophical objection. To an elected board. Voting to increase their, during their term of office in which they take that vote. I think the appropriate method is to, if you think the job pays too little. Is to vote for an increase to take effect during the following term, so the voters can decide whether they agree with you or not. Now, I'm standing that these are, you know, token raises at best and frankly, they're token salaries, but. I still, it's a philosophical objection, so I, I. Would abstain from any vote to decrease them that doesn't take effect. In the next term. I, I just, I think that's, we owe that to the voters, that's my statement.
So does that also, would you add to that then also the board of assessment appeals because they are elected?
No, because we're voting to increase our own salaries. Tiny as they may be. It's okay that we vote to increase subordinate elected official salaries.
I just want to make sure I understood where you were.
I'm, I'm saying, I don't think we vote, you know, it's like if Congress gives itself a raise in the same years that they're. Uh, that they're elected, I think they're not playing fair.
Understood. For the discussion?
I quit.
I'm sorry, Bob?
I quit.
Mr. Selectman DePietro, your resignation is not accepted. You're out, you're out of order.
That's one response.
Out of order.
In all candor, I, you know, if it were a significant increase, I would, I would concur and, and. J- just with, with that in mind. I'm not, it's not all script, but it is, it is in discussion of, of the salary. I think it's part of something that, that, that. We have a board have to look at it to, to. You know. To more properly compensate your, your, your chief elected officer.
Would you like to make a motion that there be, um. Research done?
We, we move it, we move it to a subcommittee to really look what's. What's going on out there in, in what is commensurate to what, what is given here. We have a difficult. We always had. Uh, the difficulty of getting people to run and serve because. It, it's exceedingly time consuming and unless you're. Either semi-retired or in a position to give up a good part of your life. You're leaving out. So many people who I think could be members of this board in this way, old guys like me can say, thank you, I've enjoyed it, I'd like to step down. And, uh, and, and. I, I just, I, and it's time to look at that, so I, I, I would. Like the board to. Consider. Putting, putting forth a, a, to, to the sub, the appropriate subcommittee. Sit down and examine the, the salary that's paid the first selectman. Obviously. That would be. For the next, next term, whomever, whomever that person would be. So we would have a salary that is. A reasonable salary for the amount of work that's, that's required. So, I don't know if we need a motion for that, but that's more like my, my thought process.
I have a note to do some research for you.
With that, we, we do, I, I did. Make a motion to. I believe, approve. The salary increases also to include the, the board.
I think you seconded. I think you seconded it. Uh it's a two point two five recommendation, but we have had discussion. Uh have you changed your mind on the second, Bob?
Yeah, cuz I'm concerned about Adam's point, knowing that with charter change, we increase the number of selectmen, there's going to be implications we have to consider, right?
It will be in another budget, uh not.
That's nice.
Following, it'll be following. That's a good point.
That's also something to look at when we're looking at salaries. I mean, that's a good point, because.
There are seven, uh the 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 change is seven, and it is a four-year term. On Adam's point, when you go to set a salary, it will be looking at if it were to continue with that same thought, that it'd be a four-year commitment to a single salary.
Yeah.
I'll 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 second the three dollar raise for myself. Three dollars a month is what it turns out to be. So I have no problem taking a heat for that. So I'll second.
Just just so I clear it again, the fire chief and deputy fire chief increases are three percent and three point eight nine percent. Does that?
That was.
Or is that?
That, I thought we already voted on that when we voted on the plan that was put forth earlier.
No, yeah, I'm not sure why this didn't end up all on, you know, the same page, but uh the next, the next part of it is includes the non-union stipends, the fire captains and lieutenants.
All those are part of the.
That's all been already agreed on. It's just really.
Five year.
It's really just formalizing it, but you you're, that's accurate.
Okay, but that's not included in this motion.
No, I didn't see it. So.
This motion is is.
We're.
Add to the the select board, the the assessor, the fire chief, the deputy fire chief, the assistant fire chief, all at two and a quarter percent.
Yes.
So unless you either divide the the motion to eliminate the select board.
Wait, I'm gonna have to.
I thought we were voting on the board of selectmen, those three people right now.
Yeah, I I will revive my motion.
All right, this.
It it.
Right, right.
Because it is.
Coming forward. Lot more?
I'm I'm gonna revive my motion that 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 we uh that that motion include the board of selectmen because I believe, and treasurer, that's in there, and the assessor, period. And let's see. Yeah, that's it.
I'll second that at two point two five.
Two point two five.
Do we have a treasure?
No, we don't.
We don't.
We're taking it.
Well, so.
Non-existent.
So giving that person, giving the non-existent person a two point two five.
Well, two point. I'm in motion to eliminate.
Yeah. Yep.
So this is just board of selectmen and the.
And the assessor.
And it doesn't have a second.
Yep, Mike.
Oh, Mike.
Yes.
Is there further discussion?
It seem, the same point I made is I I I I don't think it's appropriate to vote on your own set during the term of office here.
Has other? I, because I don't have a teacher background in this, has other boards?
Yes.
Given themselves rates?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it in the budget for the three dollars for Michael Armin?
I think we got it.
It's it's three dollars a month. Three dollars a month. It's a big nut to crack there.
Much in July, so I think.
Yeah, you don't have to make a retro. How's that?
It's three lottery tickets.
Only the one dollar ticket.
I think we should all buy the three lottery tickets and give them to the town.
And hope.
We have a motion on the table. We have a second. Is any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes and all opposed, one abstention. Bob DiPietro?
A thing.
Two of them. One, three in favor and two abstentions. Going down to the remainder, the rest of the list uh from far, did we say assassin in that? Was it?
We have the next one, the next ones are the fire chief, the assistant fire chief, which is specific, it's a specific amount.
And then include the other page, Bob, with the non-union stipends for the fire department, the fire captains and the fire lieutenants. And this is really just indemnifying the schedule, which is the the board of selectmen have already agreed to you in the five-year plan. That's how, that's how I would do the motion.
Let's not move that.
Second?
We need Bob DiPietro or somebody to second.
Yeah, Mike.
Mike, Mike is is not gonna second it.
Oh, that's it. My, it's not. I I have no second on the table.
I'll second it for the sake of discussion only because I don't, I was not part of the decisions on the five-year plan, but I just have a question.
Sure. Okay, uh I, it's been made motions and seconded. Uh Adam?
Yeah, uh so my question is, when was the five-year plan voted on and who voted on it? And what did it say? I've never seen.
It it came up in a budget discussion in, I don't remember the exact year, but it was probably eighteen nineteen, something like that, looking back. Uh and it was presented by the fire chief. Uh I wasn't part of the fire department, I believe, at that point. Uh and he put forth a plan to increase salaries. Uh the higher raises going to the lower officers and the smaller raises going to the chief officers in order to encourage people to volunteer for the positions uh in the fire department, the positions of responsibility uh in the fire department, uh because a lot is being asked of them. And he put that forth, and I remember being, we we actually met on this one, I believe, at the senior center, when he put it forth, and we all agreed at that time that this was an appropriate plan to phase in over five years.
Originally, originally, there was a what we had, what the board had looked at and was originally proposed was significant increases right at the beginning. And the board back then felt that this is something that you have to do, stretch it out into a a over a period of time. And we worked out a five-year, a five-year plan to bring it up to the level that uh everyone felt would be appropriate. And at that time, after that, that any increases would be, you know, discussed and brought up and and more more than likely in line with any other increases that the percentage is two point or one or two, whatever we have.
So what year in the five-year plan are we?
This is it.
This is the fifth.
I think this is the fifth year.
This is the last.
Uh what is the strength right now, uh Michael, and the on the board, on the fire department? Captains and lieutenants um positions? Are we at full strength?
Uh we're, we're one officer short right at the moment. And uh some of that is uh because there's been a couple of cuts made, and we're working to, this is the time of the year where we reappoint officers, and uh we'll have to make that decision based on where budget cuts landed and things like that. Right now, for the entire department, we're about thirty-nine people, about seventeen or eighteen active firefighters, the rest being support and purely EMS personnel.
Do we have eight lieutenants and two captains?
Uh we have at this point uh seven lieutenants and two captains. The assistant chief's position currently is vacant, a deputy chief and a chief. And the the assistant chief's position should be filled. It just hasn't been.
And has the has the five-year plan worked? That is, over the four years that you've been doing this?
Uh I think it has. Like I said, the junior officers have gotten the the bulk of the raises uh to entice younger people to move into positions, because you're sitting right now with the fire department that uh believe it or not, relies on social security people for daytime work. And uh we're going to be in a situation when the chief decides to step down and I decide to walk away, where uh you may be in a position where you're gonna have to hire a stipend chief similar to uh Hebron and other towns, where you may not have somebody that's ready to step in to fill the role. Uh if we don't entice some of the younger people to give up, well, a good example is, we ask them to be for one of the new guidelines that we've kind of established is for a fire uh captain and above, uh fire officer one designation, safety officer, firefighter one, firefighter two. And if you put those all together, that's an entire year of every day of every weekend going to school. To be qualified for the positions that pay them a couple of thousand dollars a year. And not only uh they get a little bit in the stipend, uh the proficiency fund thing, but they're also giving up four nights a month to be on call minimum. Uh you know, holidays, weekends, all of that. Uh weekends are eight to eight, basically, or seven to seven the next morning. Uh so if you're, if you're on call on a Christmas day, you're on call from seven in the morning, Christmas day, till seven in the morning, the day after Christmas, which means you're responsible to be available to the town, stay in town as much as possible, you know, without, you're gonna run to Shady Glen for a gallon of ice cream, but uh much further than that is really not accepted. So it it's an awful lot to ask of a volunteer nowadays. That's why uh in the past six or seven years, national volunteerism in firefighters went from one point two million to just over six hundred thousand. A fifty percent drop in half a dozen years in the number of, number of people who are volunteering. If you look around, you see paid people in Coventry, Will uh Wellington, Ashford, Mansfield, Tolland, Hebron, Colchester. Uh it it's just happening because there's no people around daytime that are available. Our younger people work, and you know, aside from weekends and nights, they're not available. And you rely on the people who are collecting social security during those times. And i- it's very difficult to attract people and then say, if you wanna move up or you wanna do the job, you've gotta go to school for the next ten weekends to get your firefighter one. And if you wanna get safety officer, there's another dozen, half a dozen or three, eight weekends, and i- it's just, you know, it i- it's more than I would have foreseen thirty or forty or fifty years ago when I started in this. And I I don't know how these people give up that time from their families, because most of the people that you're asking to give up the time are people with young children, because they're the junior new members.
This is. That's facing uh across the state and and we are are keenly aware of it. We're blessed to have so many people in our town that have dedicated their adult lives and sometimes starting in high school and serving uh in multiple capacities, not just one capacity sometimes, on their their volunteer time. And we're, we're very grateful for their dedication and their service. Thank you, Mike, for that description.
Remove the question.
At this, this time, we now, it's you're not making that horrible motion, are you? No. Uh at this time, we'll we'll call for, if there's further discussion?
No.
Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I have, I will abstain.
So we have four yes and one of the things.
I request a five-minute break.
At this point, we'll take a five-minute recess. It is eight point five. We'll be back at.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
We're gonna cut, come back to order. Thank you very much. There's a break, and uh we have now gone down to
Seven C, I think.
Yep.
I'm just checking everything off here. Uh we need to act, center and act on the next real estate property tax, personal property tax due date. Request is October one, two thousand and twenty-two as the due date. Do I have uh with a delinquent date of November first, two thousand and twenty-two? Is there a motion?
So.
Thank you, Adam.
I'll second for discussion.
And a second for for.
I have a question. As to.
Please proceed.
Why? Why they just wouldn't be sending? Why they just wouldn't be sending them out with the regular ones that the supplementals, they go in January?
This was the request from the tax collector. She thought this would be the most, you know, way to take care of it. It would be easier for
Okay, that's, that, for me, it doesn't make any difference. I'm just trying to think cost wise and whatever. Generally, there aren't
Because, and I think, and here's, I think the reason is because everybody is going to get a tax bill. Everybody who owes taxes is going to get a tax bill. Everybody who owes taxes for anything other than motor vehicles is going to get this tax, this supplemental tax bill. The January tax bills will only be those that have changes. So, and I think that's why it's easier for her.
Okay. I, I would be, I just say, I'm just curious as to why.
Any further questions?
And the more money we owe to the bank now, we're inspirational enough to better off.
Very good. So we have a motion on the table and I will call for the vote. All in favor of the motion before us for October 1 and November 1 is the delinquent date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is unanimously. Moving on to D, on the revow bid. In your packet, there was a memo from Helen, our interim assessor, and it gave the two bids that came before us. One for fifty-one, fifty-one thousand three hundred and the second one for seventy-four thousand dollars. And her recommendation is to go with the first one, the Vision Government Solutions at the lower cost. Is there any questions?
Is there any difference between the proposals? I mean, that's a big
You know why? The difference is Vision, their programming is already in place here. If you go with the other company, it's a whole new
It's all new.
All new program structure. So that
We have an established relationship with Vision.
No, no, but
It's another twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
They got a lot of
Yeah. That's what it's all about. And Vision is probably, it is most prominent one, I think. Municipal valuation is like third, second.
In my recollection is, you know, we, we always get, you know, some appeals, but when we've used them before, it hasn't been crazy.
I know. My, no, I, I concur. It's my part of my business and when they they're pretty good as far as a rebound company. And their software is good. It's easy to handle. It's easy to read and it's easy for a resident to utilize.
Any further questions? Bob DePietro? No? Mike? Do I have a motion then to choose one of these?
I'm, I'm who we accept the low bid vision at fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars.
Second.
Thank you, Adam, for a second. No further discussion. I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Passing unanimously. Trying to get this through as many as possible, Adam. Consider active to be able to vote via Zoom for town meeting.
So I told you, I'd get you a little more information and really what I found is that there are no towns that I found that are allowing people to vote on the, you know, on the Zoom or Teams directly. I did have a conversation with some folks from the town of Vernon, what they have done and have met with some level of success is they've held their town meeting via Zoom. And then had a time period right following that Zoom meeting where people had a period of time, usually two or two and a half hours to drive up and vote. So that if they were concerned about exposure to COVID or things of that nature, if they had the ability to participate in voting, then they could drive up, they could show their driver's license and they could vote. Basically with a drive, with a drive through vote. But I've not found any towns that have found a successful way, not, not that there isn't any out there. I just haven't found anybody that has had a successful way and has a policy in place for online voting.
So that means they have to have somebody outside wait, waiting with a list.
Correct.
Checking them, recording them.
Is exactly what they did, yeah.
Does the moderator have to be out there with them?
Um, no.
Because the moderator is the governor of the town meeting by, by charter. So I don't know how you could have somebody voting with
Sitting, sitting outside with a voter list, checking off the voters as they go through and you're going to have to have just like a voting place. Set up outside or in a location where people could walk in and walk out. It's going to be like a voting, like you have to have everything ready for potential of eight hundred people to walk in and vote.
This is an issue where if anything is done on it, it should be a statewide so that whatever the rule is, whatever the ruling is, it should be every municipality should have the same system to work under for this type of thing. Everyone's facing this and have, having a hundred and fifty-six different methodologies of dealing with this thing truly doesn't make any sense. And I hope if Secretary of State's office or, or even the legislator
I don't, I don't think they're wrestling with it right now.
And I don't think
It could be a nightmare. You get a, you get a hot topic, you know, purchasing property, raises, union contracts, whatever it turns out to be. And you get a little bit of the town stirred up. You could have a significant number of people lined up outside, almost as many as we've had in some of the referendums. And I don't know whether we, we got to pay those people to stand outside and check off names or
They would be paid, yes.
So, so you're looking at, you're looking at the potential for a couple of thousand dollars, at least as much as we spend in a referendum.
I can tell you, Mike, that union contracts was not a hot topic.
No, it wasn't. Not this time, but it has been in the past. You know, there have been things that came up for, you know, we used to do the budget by town meeting. And you know, you're talking about a hot topic, you know, that came, that changed and there'll be others that will, that will approach that, you know, as
Yeah.
I, I just don't see the no, you know, it you can all, we can always bring it to a referendum if it's something and, and, but I don't know. I just
But I would, I would have liked to see some other solutions. I'm surprised there's no technology that allows for
There probably will be in a year or so, or two or three, but not now.
That's really found.
So at this point, is there any motion before us?
No, I, I don't think we, I don't think we can act on something that
No.
Thank you.
At this time.
So we'll hold off and if anyone does further research, Bob DePietro or you've offered other research offers before or Jim?
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to walk.
Thank you. We'll move down now. Thank you. Move down to A, A. The COVID report, as you know, there's quite a bit of COVID going on. It's very hard to report now as most people know because it's a, a, there's so much home testing being done and so many people are not reporting in that they haven't. When they having very low, minor symptoms. So it's been very hard to track. And we are able to track those with vaccines and the population with town of Bolton. And if anybody's interested, I've got the report right here that you could look at. And there is a small spike, as you know, that's been happening, but it is less than it was in May. It's gone down by about half, spike in May.
Last month or so has been pretty stable. Not that it hasn't occurred, but at a stable level.
And then I would move on the, if, if no further questions, I'll move on then to other. I do get a monthly report from the Connecticut State Police on the correspondence on the calls that our troopers respond to. I just will pass this around. I can just bring a couple of, but I don't, I usually don't get them until after this meeting. So the last one I got was July 7th. The next one I'll get. I have gotten one for, for this month yet. It's in our making to current. So we are posting them on our webpage. So if anybody wants to see them. Please feel free. We usually get them from Kyle, Sergeant Kyle Cormier or from the Lieutenant Adam Rosenberg, who is now the commanding officer at Troop K. And the good news is they're very, there have been no burglaries in that last report. We also got a request from someone who wanted to coordinate French and American students to do an archaeological dig on the farm and I, there have been some discussions on it. I still don't have a clear understanding what age level the, this, this, this would, the request is for. But we got a response from Mary Harper from PAST, which is archaeological and historical research that was in your packet. And when we look in reference to that and the interest that we have in putting a trail across there, it's sort of crossed both those pieces. That we're going to the trail and the request to do some other archaeological digs. And then the, the dig request is for, I believe, 2023? The summer.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. Fifty-one weeks from now is what I would say.
And that because we we're on this part of the status here, we're under the state archaeological, archaeological preserve. Part of the farm and there's some sensitive questions on where major artifacts could be found such as perhaps the prior location of Reverend Colton's house. We know that the current house sitting on the farm is a reconstruct or it was new construction after a fire. At this point, I don't have any further information to ask for a voter on anything, but it, the one discussion Jim and I were, were having is that the amount of level of detail that we will be providing to the Connecticut DOT Office of Environmental Planning and Archaeological for archaeological sensitivity for our proposed path and parking will be something that we'll be looking at very closely so that we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is. Moving on, the administrator's report, the monthly report. Jim, do you want to highlight?
I will. I do think they're going to plan to come to our September Board of Selectmen's meeting to talk to us directly about the archaeological
The request from Nelson.
Yeah, I think, I think they're going to plan to come to our September meeting.
And then would you ask also then to have Mary Harper come also?
Yeah, we'll see if she can come.
We'll see if we can get her. Thank you. The monthly report, Jim, something you would like to highlight?
Well, I mean, I think there's a couple of things. So the, the trash contract is going through trash company's attorney. It's now with the town attorney for review. We did, we still have a vacancy in the Buildings and Grounds Department. They are welcoming one of their employees who's been out with a medical issue back to work tomorrow without with, you know, he, he, he's coming back without any restrictions. So we're excited to have him back. That really helps fill a hole. We've completed some road paving. We've got some catch basing and plans for milling and paving of a couple of other areas. But you know, one of the things that did happen this last week is I had a meeting with the engineer who designed the Mark Anthony Bridge, the installer, as well as our town engineers to have some conversations with them. I have a project description in with the UConn School of Engineering to help create a project that will potentially do the hydraulic study to help them with, you know, keeping the engineering costs of finishing the approval of the bridge to a minimum. We've actually gotten some applications for the shared assessors position. We've onboarded two new employees, John Treat, who was our new mechanic and Sue Ellen Camara. She is the new hire in the selectmen's office, replacing Gary Silver. Lake usage continues to be pretty smooth, but it has increased with Coventry Lake close to the blue green algae issues they're having. Our lake usage has gone up a bit. We have a new animal control officer, Craig, retired. Have Jerry, who was servicing the town of Bolton in a shared services agreement with the town of Vernon. I think we reported that the dirt pile's been removed from the Bolton Center Cemetery. Registrars are working on mailing out notices regarding voting locations. We've had the second billing for the second trash cans has gone out and a couple have actually been removed from service because we haven't been paid. A brush truck is in its final stages of getting completed and moving into service. I know, I think we're waiting for some decals and a skid unit for the back of the truck. But it's, it's certainly in, in the works. One of the things, although this doesn't really affect the Board of Selectmen, it's one of our accomplishments this month was to update the fees for 25 anchorage and get the lien in place, the old sewer authority, about thirty-four thousand dollars at this point. And we've completed the EMPG grant request for eighteen nineteen. It's always well behind. It's just the way the system works. We completed some ARPA reporting with the OC, with OPM. We got the speed limits, the signs installed in the locations that we discussed at the last meeting and the signs have been ordered for Wall Street. I've met with CROC leadership. They have a working group that put together, trying to put together a regional BO, a building official and fire marshal group because there's a regional shortage. It's actually a nationwide shortage of those two positions. We've sent letters to unsuccessful applicants. We had a conversation with the town attorney regarding an FOI request for personal information for all union employees. And we're working on, we'll continue to work on the RFP for bond council. We've collected a bunch of information, so we'll be working on putting a draft together. The spaces at Notch Road are ready for use. We did have the first meeting scheduled there with the Historical Society, but they've canceled and moved their date to September. And the Summer Arts Program will be beginning in one of those spaces. We've had a virtual meeting with Novus and Superintendent of Schools regarding a cybersecurity audit. We have some issues that we're going to have to deal with. Then we have a follow-up meeting scheduled with them on August 9th.
For the schools or the town?
Both. The issue is that the, the systems are
Maybe you shouldn't announce it publicly.
Yeah.
I did want to say one thing about the contents of our kits. When members of the public write to us or, or their letters are included in the packet, I would suggest when they have phone numbers and personal email addresses that they've blacked out, be further to them.
Okay, we can do that.
I think this general thank you out of those.
Email lab because they vote us.
Temporary building commission?
They are, they are waiting for our facilities and public safety building committed commission to meet and answer their questions.
Okay. Everybody heard that? And then if there is, we have, we have to go back. I would like to go back to number four. I'd like to have a motion, please, to be accept Daniel Bookham's resignation as library page with thanks. I've written a letter to him, thanking him for his service.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very popular. Thank you very much. The approval of the minutes. We have quite a list from A to H. Do we have people that, people who would like to bring up any corrections, solutions, additions? Bob DePietro?
On June 24th, there's a reference to Curly Pond, it should be Curly there's a reference to curly pond, should be curly weed.
Early pond weed.
Curly pond weed.
Um, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
No, curly weed, uh, yeah, curly pond weed. Not curly pond, but curly pond weed.
Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
The, uh, I think the last set of minutes, uh, Mr. Bowden's name was misspelled.
Um, that's a July, July twenty-third.
No, he wasn't at the AP, so that would be the July.
No, no, it was a twelve.
The twelve, the right, the regular, the regular meeting.
The regular meeting.
That would be July twelve.
So noted for correction.
Excuse me, this is Ivan. What is the correct spelling?
B E A U D.
O I N.
O I N.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Nice to hear from you.
And I'll move the acceptance of the, uh, uh, the minutes of June seventh. Uh, the special meeting, June seventh, regular meeting, June twenty-first, special meeting, June twenty-fourth, special meeting, June thirtieth, special meeting, July twelfth, regular meeting with corrections. And July nineteenth, special meeting, July twenty seventh meeting, and also with the June twenty-first correction.
Twenty-seven.
That's the twenty-seventh.
Which one had the curly pond?
That was, that was June twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth, that's the curly pond.
So with the two corrections, uh, and do I have a second?
Second.
Bob, Bob DiPietro seconds, uh, any further additions or corrections that people have found?
Um, in the, the June twenty-fourth, uh, minutes, especially on page two. Um, third paragraph from the bottom. The word, um, in the second line, it says, because he has left the company, it should say, because he has left employment.
Town employment?
Right, town employment.
I, also on June twenty-first, number five, I was thinking of vote recorded.
I'm sorry, Bob, would you repeat that one more time, twice?
I think on June twenty-first.
Yeah.
There are number five or six, I can't remember. Do we have vote? There's a motion, but I don't see a vote.
Yeah, there's a vote for number five, there is. For number six.
Yeah, there's a vote down the bottom.
And June twenty-fourth?
Oh, you said June twenty-first.
Oh, I can't read my writing, sorry.
Twenty-fourth, alright.
Well, it's my fourth, hang on.
Yeah, you're right. On number five, there's a, there's a motion there to approve current employee donating sick time. Motion by me, seconded by Mike, but no vote recorded.
Hmm.
It was.
We did not, um, we did not agree on the issue. I mean, that is unanimous that we didn't agree to allow it.
No, this was, this was the alternate, the alternate response.
Yeah, and I, I believe it was five oh. We're going, going along with the, uh, negotiated union language.
I, I think that's accurate.
That's correct. It was five oh.
Yep.
I voted to allow people to donate up to five days.
Right.
Based on the model.
Yep.
If, if I had choice of vote against that, I would have said no, nay. If I had no choice, then I had no choice. But the model I'm going by is federal and federal allows people to donate vacation time, but not sick time.
You weren't at this meeting, Mike.
No, no, of course, that was a.
So it was a four, nothing.
Yep.
Okay, so Ivan, would you please, um, make that correction? It was a, uh, four. Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
With.
Is there any further corrections?
If I for her, it's, it, those voting were Mike Arameter, Bob Moore, Adam Keller, and Pam Sawyer. Those are those were the four votes.
Any further corrections? Hearing none, I'll call, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, uh, passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, at this point, uh, I believe that concludes. Did I miss anything, guys?
I think you've got it.
I think I've got everything now.
Question, Pam, on seven, uh, seven F, did we ever agree, uh, noise orders, one way or the other?
We decided that we are not going to move forward with the noise ordinance at this time. We did not take a, uh, an action. There was no action.
Have to in order to keep all people happy, there we.
It was a discussion. It was up for discussion. It was not up for action. If you would like to bring it up in the next meeting, we can, next meeting.
No, I'm fine.
But thank you. Adam, I know you have to leave.
Um, don't worry, the train will be later.
At this time, then, uh, I would ask that we go into executive session. I need a motion.
Do, do we need, do we need to go into executive session to discuss this?
Oh.
It's, it's really just a process that we're.
Process. I won't be in it either one.
Alright, then we will have a discussion, an open discussion on the process of the, uh, personal evaluation of the administrative officer.
I'll take care of the call. Don't worry about it.
Good luck today.
Good luck. Thank you, sir. So with four members remaining, uh, one of the discussion, we have a couple of discussions, I should state, um, um, on how to, to do this, uh, the personnel, I, the discussion has been brought forward that the administrators' evaluation results should be brought, sent to the first selectman's email. I personally believe that the personnel subcommittee should be the appropriate group to collate the results and present them back to the board as a whole. And I.
The reason why you were chosen, you weren't there.
Yeah, I.
So, that's, that's how it works. The, uh, the, the, the subcommittee, when we put this together, we're quite sure what would be the, the, the most appropriate way to direct it. We just felt that would be one way.
But, but you wanted to have a way for people to participate and not have me or people, other people in the
Right.
Selectman's office necessarily see the, see the results. The idea was that the, the Board of Selectmen would look at those results and, you know, be able to discern what was of value and what maybe had less value.
It's just, I'm in that subcommittee. I, I don't mind if it goes mine. But it's just, that, that was the whole reasoning for, for doing that.
Or under the bus. I.
Right.
So, um.
You weren't there, you got thrown under the bus.
I, I believe it is a, it is, is a function of that subcommittee, uh, to, and to call it, bring it, and because we've approved the vehicle that, and that they should collate it, bring it forward. I believe, I would like to recommend that the results that we get back from the staff have their names and titles redacted uh, so that they can speak freely. Uh, and I'd like to know the board's thoughts on that.
Oh, I'm, I'm a great believer in if you, if you're gonna say it, put your name on it.
Yep, I, I, I'm afraid I, I concur with that. I, uh.
But they are subordinate. They are not of equal.
That's okay.
But, but this, this material that goes to the subcommittee, not to the, does not go to the administrative officer for his.
Right. He's not going to see it. They're not going to see it in the office. You should have guts enough to put your name on it.
The only people that will see it would be the subcommittee. That's it.
Adam, Pietro?
I did never heard such a thing in the first place, so I'm kind of reluctant to agree to it.
You're, you're not, never heard of having the employees evaluate their supervisor?
Right.
Uh, I, I was opposed to this to begin with, the, the whole thing. And in all the times that I've been on the board and we've hired or fired or chosen a new person or done evaluations, we've done it on the recommendation of the personnel subcommittee. And I still believe that that's how it should be done, that, uh, this individual works for the Board of Selectmen directly for the first selectman and his boss is us and we should have guts enough to say what we think and evaluate him the way we believe he should be evaluated and stand by it. And
Right, right.
This is one of those things, if the people don't believe in what we've done, then vote me out. You know, I, uh, I do what I think is in the best interest of the community when I vote. And I believe that I can make a fair decision on this individual's ability to do his job. And I would be very happy that it just comes from the first all subcommittee to the Board of Selectmen for a meeting in, in public. I have no problem with that. It could be in, uh, you know, executive session if you want, but I don't have a problem with putting my name on it and saying I agree or disagree with what he's done.
And, and I, I, we concur. And I, Adam and I had a long discussions back and forth on this. And the, the only thing, originally the thought on this was if an employee, my thought, wanted, wanted to comment on it, we would be the ones they would talk to before. But it is the subcommittee's job, you know, you, you were on it several times to bring forth the recommendation to the board based upon their, their evaluation and, and, um, we had some, well, we had set up, or, or, we had a proposal of, of various questions to set up on that. And I, uh, you, and I know you worked on sets, you and Gwen worked on a couple of them together uh, in, in bringing it up. And that's and that's the other thing we kind of tossed around. What, we had a, a, a rough draft of, of a criteria. Do we want to have?
I, I have no problem you giving me that criteria and I will rate him as I believe he functions and I'll stand by my rating.
The question, the question, Mike, was whether or not people who report to him to be evaluating him.
I, I, I disagree with that and, and you see it in every big city where they hold a vote of no confidence in their police chief or a vote of no confidence in this person, a vote of no confidence in that person. And the better the job guy, the job the person does, the more often he's going to get voted of no confidence because the, you're, he's ruffling feathers and making changes and, and everybody loves the status quo. And if you get somebody in there with new ideas and a little bit of un, chutzpah, they tend to take a beating. And we're the ones that are, we're elected to make this decision and
I agree.
And, and I think we can do it.
I agree.
I agree. And then you, you can also simply make a note, anybody, if, if, if anybody has a comment, they can comment to our, the subcommittee.
Right.
At this time, yeah, at this, I would take it certainly. At this time, I would accept a motion that uh, that the evaluation tool will only be filled out by selectmen and that it would go to Bob Moore's email account or and shared with his, the subcommittee, the personnel subcommittee. And then it would be brought back to the board once that process is done in a reasonable time.
With, well, yeah, that reasonable time is prior, prior to the next.
I'm looking for a, a motion.
Can we make a motion in executive session?
I do not.
We are not in executive session.
Oh, okay. I forgot about that. I'll make that motion.
Come from the Personnel Committee?
Yeah.
Well, that doesn't matter.
I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion.
That's good. And I'll second that. Is that?
So just, you know, A- Adam's not here, so I just want to try to, I was at the meeting and so I just want to speak on his behalf, just so I, I try to, I'll try to articulate the best I can where he was coming from. You know, he, it was, he, he felt very strongly that both the public and direct reports have the opportunity to weigh in on the performance of this position. And he felt that way because he felt that the public was certainly impacted by how well I interact with the public and how well I do or don't do my job. And that he felt that the Board of Selectmen as a whole, and certainly the Personnel Subcommittee had the ability to look at what was real and what was maybe, you know, somebody's uh, exaggeration of a situation, uh, based on a single interaction that I may have with them. Um, and, and he thought that it had value for both the public and the, uh, and the direct reports of town employees to come to you. I, I think you've seen in the past where if the town employees have had an issue, they have found a way to let the Board of Selectmen know that they had concerns and would like the Board of Selectmen to consider and address those concerns. That, that has happened in the not so distant past. Um, so I think, just, you know, Adam's not here and I know he would have said it much more eloquently, but.
No, I think it's pretty, pretty much the way he did. And, and quite frankly, the way to, to address that issue is you have the subcommittee. The subcommittee will listen to anybody, any comments that any employee would like to send, to the, knowing the subcommittee send it and to, and it would be to me, since I'm the senior person on that subcommittee, to my email address here. And subcommittee can look it over and, and to do, you know, to evaluate. Somebody certainly are capable of doing that. And without having it to be a formal, you know, this question, that question, that question. If you have a comment on the, the, you can let them know that, that the, uh, subcommittee is putting together the evaluation of the administrative officer. If you have any comments forwarded to my email address here uh, uh, for the subcommittee to consider. That should cover everything.
Okay, that's not part of the original motion? Is that something you, you're interested in amending your motion?
Yes.
Now, if you would like to amend it.
You had to ask me that question.
Yes, sir, I do. I'm sorry.
That you're, you're willing to accept comments from the public or personnel?
My, or town personnel.
Yeah.
And that, and as, as the, as the, uh, head of the, um, Personnel Subcommittee.
And who was seconded that? I'm sorry. Was it Mike?
Michael seconded.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it. Yes, for sure.
Are there any further discussion?
I would just like to say, we're talking about process, so to that being thinking specifically of Jim Ruber, which we're thinking of anyone who's in that position.
Right.
You said we're talking about process, not specifically about Jim Ruber?
Right.
A lot of process.
And so that no matter, it should, the process should be the same for no matter who's in the position.
Yep.
Right.
I concur.
Is that accurate, Bob?
That's correct. Both of us. And I don't think in the motion, we need a time, do we need a timeframe?
Well, I think, well, I don't, I don't know that it has to be in the motion, but I, I'd like to have at least a consensus before
Right.
we leave here tonight, what the timeframe's gonna be, and how you want us to get messaging out.
Yep.
All right, let's make, let's, let's vote on the motion before us that has been amended and and seconded. So all, all in favor, say aye.
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 The, it's a four votes with one absent. Mr. Teller is now absent.
I, to, to speak to Jim's statement?
As of nine twenty four, Mr. Teller has left the meeting. Yes, Michael?
Speaking to Jim's comment about the, the time period and ways of getting it out. People have the ability to watch this many times during the month. Most people, or a lot of people, look at our meetings and watch them and see what's going on. So I think that's one method. If you wanted to put it in the bulletin, that comments are, are welcomed kind of thing, that would be appropriate. I would say no more than sixty days. I would look for thirty days so we could do it at our next meeting. Because I think it'll just draw out if we don't. So I would recommend prior to our next selectmen's meeting.
I would say by September first.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that gonna, is that gonna give you appropriate time?
Yes.
The meeting, isn't it the week after Labor Day? Or is it that? Let me see.
I honestly don't remember. Kathy and I talked about it yesterday, but I don't
I'll take a peek.
Meeting is the sixth of this, of September?
Yeah, well, even even if we have to hold a special, we, we hold how many special meetings during that month? We, we, if we have to hold over another week, that's fine, but
Well, you may, frankly, you may want a special meeting
Right.
for this as a board, so that you really have
So if we get all, all the comments in by, by the first, we can get together that week, the following week, and then
That sounds good.
Well, we'll hold a special meeting in, in the middle of the month and do it.
Okay.
That work for everybody?
We have a, I don't believe we need a motion, but I think
I don't think we need a motion.
Consent this?
Yep.
Very good. But we don't, at this point, I think we've covered everything.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not bad.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you, Ivan, for all you do, and CBC for covering us this evening.